Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. How's everybody? Good to see you guys. Like call order this notice or this joint special meeting, the Board of Commissioners of Johnson County, Indiana and Morgan County, Indiana. On this twenty-seventh day of April two thousand twenty at eleven o'clock AM. This will be a joint meeting and on Zoom for anyone that's listening. So. Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good to have you here. Looks like you guys are all in your homes and cars and things. Came out of our commissioner meeting and we had this morning at ten o'clock. So we're still in our auditorium area. So. And what we're here is is there's some discussion that's come up on a letter of intent with Morgan County. On the wastewater treatment facility. And there were some questions. I know Commissioner West has been working with you all on everything, but there were some questions that I know. Commissioner Walls had. So we just thought maybe we just all get together and just kind of talk about it. So we know. We all know where we're at and what's going on and all those questions to be answered. Nothing that we can really prepare for. So. That's why we're here.
Give me the fire off. I got some credit. You guys, you guys have a current wastewater treatment plant down Morgan County? That you operate and run?
We, hey Kevin, Commissioner Walls.
Oh, you can call me Kevin. This is informal. What was?
We have a regional sewer district that contracts the operation. Of a wastewater treatment plant through Aqua Indiana that covers portions of Madison Township in Morgan County. And then in addition to that, we have the Waverly wastewater treatment plant is physically under construction. At this time. We are about. Six weeks or more into the construction of the plant that's in Waverly. So that's the extent of our regional sewer operations. They're really two-part. A current operation in Madison Township and then an operation that is under construction in Waverly.
Has the one in Madison been a worthwhile venture, I guess would be what I would ask? Or is it more of a pain than not? I'm being very candid and very straight up on this one. So, you know, I'm, as you can tell, I'm really not convinced on this yet, and I'll be forthcoming with that right now. So that's why I'm just asking some of these questions. With the partnership of Johnson County, you know, it's, it's difficult enough to run it within your own. Confines, let alone bringing another government entity into the process. So that's, I'm just gonna ask some questions.
Well, and I'll certainly provide some feedback to that. I also want to encourage Commissioner Hale to add, he has some historical knowledge of the Wiser Edition. Which is our operation in Madison Township that predates my time. But. It's a very simple operation from the standpoint that we have a regional sewer district. Obviously, the commissioners appoint the board members. And the entire operation has been contracted out to Aqua Indiana. And we also contract out the month billing. And so it's all fairly automated with the exception of our board sewer district. Being six to ten times a year or so. To get certain bills paid and to make sure things are running smoothly. It has not been much of a difficulty. Now, the. Construction of a new plant in the Waverly area, you know, certainly has upped our involvement a great deal. But as it relates to what we do in Wiser, it's been, you know, rather basic. And. I should add, Kevin, too, just so you guys are aware. Don't want to step on any toes on the call. We're huge, huge fans of our neighbors to the east. And think the world of our friends in Johnson County. I want us to be aware, though, that. As far as Commissioner Hale and I, who are on the, on the call. We just saw a copy of the LOI on Friday. So we had not been, we, you know, just in all candidness as well from our side. Aware of the details of the letter till the end of last week. So I just want to be transparent about that as well. Kenny, do you have anything you want to add about our operations in Madison Town that I've missed? Because I know you, you've had a lot more experience with it than I have.
Yeah. The only thing I'm gonna mention, Kevin, and Ron and Brian as well. We have some pretty bad soil over there that we had a lot of breakouts happen, taking place. Scrambled, trying to do what they could. Only option we had was try to go ahead and form a reasonable sewer board and. Madison Township sort of boarded to start with. And go ahead and provide them sewer partnering with Aqua Indiana and have Aqua be the operator. So. It's been a success as far as getting the raw sewer from top of the ground, that's for sure. There has been some holdouts, I know, with some of the property owners that did not want to pay their bills to start with. But I think almost all that's been taken care of except for one or two. And the auditor could, Dan Bass could absolutely tell you, clearly tell you exactly where they stand at on that. Maybe. Ryan could as well there, but I know it's been a successful. Not having the raw sewage anymore and taking care and providing services has been really good. Aqua's been a good operator to work with, Kevin. And that's about, about all I can tell you on it right now.
Yeah. Kenny, Kenny brings up an excellent point because our two sewer operations are being done for two different reasons. When you look at petitioning IDM to form an RSD, they want you to make a case for. Either a public health need or perhaps an economic development need. And our situations are one of each. The. Commissioner Hale is a hundred percent right. The, our operation endeavor in Madison Township was a public health issue. And in Waverly. It's not as much as of a public health issue as it is one of future economic potential.
One thing on that I'm gonna ask, I know Bargersville is headed to the west and you're headed to the east. So. Has there been any discussion with Bargersville as far as. Where limits are gonna be put? Who's gonna, are you striving for the same customers? Does it become a pricing war between Bargersville and this new entity? I guess there's just a lot of things I gotta ask about that. I don't, I know Bargersville was headed that way. And you're wanting to head east. So where do, where do these match? Where are the lines drawn? How does, how does all that work? Has that been studied or looked at to this point?
Well, yeah, we've had the sewer district and. Redevelopment Commission members, commissioners have had dialogues with Bargersville over the last several years, even. The consultants and engineers involved in the project have had a lot of dialogue with Bargersville over the years and just. In keeping with the spirit of complete candor. They have been completely intransigent about wanting to. With anybody else and just, just being direct. And we've had no interest in. You know, we don't want to, we don't want to take over their service territory. You've mentioned. Once or twice that we want to come east. In reality, we're really running south. Into Parison Township where Waverly is, into the town center. Our primary concern is actually running south. But where there's been some overlap with Bargersville is that. In that area where you have the BP gas station at thirty-seven and one forty-four, the Knuckle Sandwich. The Whiskey River BBQ, the Morgan County Public Library, Waverly Branch. Some of those locations are actually in Bargersville's utility service territory. And so where we have wanted to work with Bargersville is not to take over. Their job and to go east into, into more of their jurisdiction, but it's been more of a matter of. Who can get to those businesses before the interstate takes them? And since we have a plant that's actually under construction. Quite, you know, almost literally a stone's throw from there. We believe that we can serve those businesses. Prevent some condemnation from the state of Indiana. But parts going more to the east beyond that. That's actually not an interest that we have. It's the, the talk with Bargersville has been mostly from the spirit of. Service those businesses before the interstate, you know, may lay claim to them. Does that make sense, Kevin?
Yep, it does. That does. Okay, the big thing. I know you've got numbers. What's the, what's the cash in amount you're gonna need? So.
I'll have to defer to, I think Daniel Elliott, President of the Redevelopment Commission is on the phone. He has more up-to-date numbers on the construction costs. Because they are, are already see us financing the project. So I don't mean to punt on that, but.
You can't have all the answers, I know.
So Daniel, I, I see you're on there. I don't know if you can chime in on that?
Let me pull up those numbers right now. So give me a second. I'm looking for them so I can give you exact numbers instead of estimation. So. Why don't we continue the conversation on other points? I will have that number for you here in a few minutes, but I don't want to. Sit here and have you guys waiting for me while I'm pulling it up on the computer.
Keith can help with those numbers as well, I believe. Keith Bryant.
Yeah, this is Keith Bryant with United. Daniel, the, the numbers I'm coming up with, the wastewater plant is about three point one million dollars right now. That's a rough number. I think it's awarded a little bit, a little bit more than three million, but there's some contingencies in there. So three point one is a good number to discuss anyway.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I had in my head as well, but I, again, I was looking for exact, but we'll go with three point one. I'll get, while we're doing that, I'll pull up some exact numbers. Again, that, that's half the plant. That is the cost of the plant itself. That, the project itself was significantly more because we also are paying for our, our lines that are going through the southern part of the, of, of the county. Well, northern part of the county going south.
That's about two point three million dollars.
You're saying that the cost of the plant itself that we would be responsible for would be three point one million?
No, that's the, three point one million is the cost of the plant right now. If, if we all decide this was a good idea, you're, the, the part that you'd be responsible for is half of that. So. One point five in, you know, million, five hundred thousand.
Then I assume that if plus any lines, we would extend out and pick up our areas too. Is that correct? Like you're doing?
Right. Well, we, what we've discussed, and again, this is. Very much a preliminary discussion, just to kind of get the ball rolling. What, what we have discussed in our conversations has been the, the plant itself is shared. So we, we share from, we share the revenue, we share in the, in the. In the, in the ownership of the plant, but then each county is responsible for its own lines as the lines go within. Within their respective counties.
So basically, if, if we. And I'm just trying to throw out all questions so we make sure we get everything answered. If, if we decide not to go in on fifty percent of the plant. Would you service that area anyway if those lines were there into that plant?
Which area are you referring to? Are you talking about, are you talking about?
I mean, if those people want to, if, if we would put lines in and, and get to the plant, would, would that plant service them regardless?
I mean, that's part of that, this negotiation process. I'm, again, I believe in being a good neighbor. I, I don't. I don't have any.
Capacity and the ability to do.
We have the capacity right now, yes. At this point in time, we have the capacity to serve others. So if you said. Hey, we need, we need to, to get some, you know, we need to serve some areas, say, you know, in Johnson County area, we need to serve some areas. Do we have the capacity right now to serve them? Yes. We overbuilt the plant with the expectation of growth. So we are right, we can do that the, absolutely right now.
Okay. And then, and it's, the reason that I ask that question is because just to be perfectly upfront and honest on this. If you, if you're gonna service that area anyway, or if that's something you would consider, that makes it, in my mind, more. Feasible predominant for us to try to work with you in a partnership, because if you're gonna do it anyway, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we, I guess? You know, in the spirit of that. So that kind of helps me in, in the way I'm looking at this. I, I guess the, this question is, 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 is what you have that you currently run now in Madison, is, is that? Is that paying for itself?
Madison is a very different situation, and I'm not an expert on it. You, you know, Ryan and, and Kenny Hale will give you much more detail than I would. But Madison was built to be, to, to solve a health need in a very, very specific area. They don't really have the room for expansion. The difference between that and the plant we're doing here, this plant that we're doing is built specifically as an economic development project. We see growth happening in terms of the, the residents, but we see a significant growth is going to happen. Once that interchange is built there. Once that interchange is built there, we're gonna have numerous. Business customers that we're gonna be able to reach out to and, and give them service. So we, we actually. See this expanding. We also have significant residential customers. Once we get that, those initial lines laid. As we expand out, very much like a, a spider web would expand out. We want to, we want to hit a lot of other residents as well. So we, there's significant room for expansion. And I will tell you one thing, one, what we found. Which was surprising to everybody, except for the engineers who told us this would happen. When we first put the plant, uh, we've been talking about for years. We didn't have tons of people say, yes, yes, I want sewer, until we actually started building the plant. Now. We have a lot of people calling saying, when can I get signed up? What do I need to do? A lot of residents. So. My point is that even the predicted growth that we thought in the residential side appears to be much bigger than what we expected. And that's not even talking about the economic development, which is really where the heart of this project and the expansion of this project is going to really take off.
And that all makes perfect sense and I understand it. And I'm, I'm very. Aware of the build that they will come process because we see that all the time. So I understand that totally. Are you, you, you've said you really have just now seen this letter of intent that we're talking about too. Is everything in that letter of intent agreeable with you? Now that we have it?
I can't.
Okay with the letter of intent, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I, I can't speak to that yet. I would need to digest it some more.
And I'll jump in here on that. When we sent the letter of intent, this was, this is our. Our first draft. This is literally sending it to you, letting you as commissioners, both on Morgan County and Johnson County, see this draft. And then what we fully expect is, is some feedback, some edits, some changes, and that's totally fine. We just wanted to, to create a framework to get the conversation started. From there, obviously, there's lots of opportunities to negotiate and try to figure out what works best for everybody.
Understood. And it's a letter of intent and I understand that as well. You know, the negotiations can go aside and things cannot work out. And that's fine, but in the spirit of, of wanting to work with the county, I want to make sure you guys are okay with the, the letter before we would say anything to her, even try to edit it. I want to make sure that you're agreeable to that. Just so we don't, what I don't want to do is put us where we're in any, any sort of conflict. I would never want to see that happen. Our working relationship has been so good with Morgan County. I want to, I want to maintain that, keep it that way.
Definitely.
Like working with good people. So it's kind of nice that we've got this relationship going. That really, other than, I know we're gonna have, you know, discussion, big discussion, probably more on the board makeup than we will anything. To make sure that we're represented fairly on both sides. And I think that's very easily workable with Morgan County and us, but. That probably would have been the biggest question that I would have had. And I, I just don't see an issue of that with Morgan County as far as us being able to work out those details. So. And that's all the questions I have.
No, I, I mean, that's really all the questions. I mean, I know it's pretty preliminary right now. Just start discussions, but no, I appreciate your honesty on this.
And what I would maybe, if maybe I, we could suggest for, for Morgan County is if you come up with, go through to digest the letter of intent from your. Your aspect of it and then send us that version. Would that be acceptable for you to do for us? And then I don't think you're gonna, from what I've seen of the original, I don't think we're gonna get a lot of kickback on the letter of intent because I felt it. Pretty good shape, but we want to make sure you're okay with all that before. So maybe we could proceed in that way that we can expect maybe a letter of intent from you that you guys are acceptable with.
I mean, I'll, I'll just jump in that that's, seems like a reasonable step for us. Our situation is peculiar from the standpoint that. The commissioners appoint the sewer district board. We have a sewer district board that's already functional and operational, so they have. Input as well. And then with our construction of the plant in Waverly. Did by the redevelopment commission. So we have. A number of people involved. It's not as straightforward as just the commissioners. And, and a lot of folks, I think, including a number of folks on the call. We've all been talking about this in various forms or fashions for a long time. So there's certainly. An, an interest in having a continued dialogue. We just have a couple of other people that we probably need to, to discuss this with on the side.
I understand that totally, sir. And we're like you are, we want to be open and transparent on everything we do and, and. We understand that totally and I'm, I'm all for that. I think you've got upfront and open with everybody involved. So.
Sure.
Hey, Ryan.
Yes, sir.
One of the key components to this, and I, I don't know if you want to talk about it or bring it up from. I think a design aspect is the casing under I sixty-nine is time critical to make the connection between Morgan. Morgan County and Johnson County. And the cost to get that casing in before I sixty-nine is in place is probably a pretty significant savings. Rather than having to come back and do it afterwards. So I don't know, you might want to speak. Speak to that, but that's really a key component to this that might require some urgency while that. I sixty-nine is being planned. And it's, it's getting kind of late in the game, but that's, that's a pretty urgent issue. And Keith Bryant. Might be able to speak in more detail to that, but I think that's a key component that needs to be discussed.
Yes. So, real quick, this Tony Hinkle, Morgan County engineer. Steve actually just jumped in right before I could. The casing and or some type of piping underneath sixty-nine has already been brought up in the last couple of meetings we've had with NDOT. On our bi-weekly Friday meetings. They are looking for something sooner rather than later, at least to get into a, a planning phase. So it is on their radar as well. The cost savings for the way they have the MOT set up, being able to do an open cut as opposed to a boring. Later on would be substantial in the, in the seven-figure range. So yes, I, I do agree with Steve that there is some urgency. To that planning portion. But again, it doesn't have to be a final design, but we'd have to come to some type of a, probably a cost sharing agreement, I would think. Between the two counties so that we could get something proposed sooner rather than later to at least put the casing in.
I might add to that. This is Keith Bryant. I think we're looking ultimately at two casings and two cross. New Wyland Road area for Morgan County and then at Stones Crossing for Johnson County. So they may be two independent crossings. Just want to. Make sure you're aware of that.
But I assume what we're saying is one of those would be Johnson County's responsibility.
Correct. The one on Stones Crossing would probably be Johnson County's. And that's, if you look at the study we did, that makes the most sense to get the unincorporated areas. That are outside of Bargersville Service Area and Greenwood Area across to the plant in Morgan County. However, still need a crossing to get to the Tiff districts in Morgan County down on New Wyland Road. So. So we've kind of had two different crossing issues going. Both of them kind of urgent, though.
Honestly, and I wouldn't even hesitate to say, let's put one on Johnson County and one on Morgan County. I think we. While they are two separate casings, we probably treat them together as part of this overall agreement.
And, and Tony, Tony and commissioners, as part of the, the design work between BLN and United, we've kind of worked as a team on this. Through the different studies and, and our, our surveys and our design, we pretty much have the location of those two crossings. Narrowed down and we know pretty specifically, I think, where they need to go and where it makes sense. But we just need to. It's, it's, it's more of a, a bigger picture issue of, like you say, trying to come to an agreement on it. And so we're pretty, pretty clear on where the specific crossings should be.
And you've shared those with Ark Mueller. Have they got that phase coming up through Morgan County too?
They've got the phase that Johnson County's crossing would be in, and we've talked to Mike Hill several times in the last couple of weeks. So. We've coordinated with them as far as what's needed. I think WSP is doing the southern section where the Morgan County crossing would be. And we've talked to BLN's representatives and they're working with them.
Okay. I'll bring it up. I've got some team meetings with NDOT. I think one o'clock today and I've got another one next week. So.
I think that could be something we want in our plan. We're looking at it too.
I think there's multiple things we can work out here with the casings just for this, but there's gonna be communications so we don't have to bore across later, you know, wherever fiber's coming from. So I think there needs to be some. Interaction between Morgan and Johnson as, as much as we can. We have the availability to do it now with the new interstate coming up. So.
Well, let me get my two cents in. This is Ron West. And of course, I'm a strong proponent of the idea of being involved. A year and a half or maybe even longer now, but. The advantages that I see and I've talked about on a number of occasions is. The county is not tied to the capabilities of another taxing district, whether it be Morgan County or Greenwood. We're not tied to another entity in as much as providing service to areas that are gonna grow. Or that are currently there. That's the beautiful part about partnering with you in this plant. It gives us the ability to service those areas. And we've seen in the past, and we're currently seeing this today. With the city of Greenwood, not being able to make capacity available to certain areas in the county that where there's. Economic development occurring, being housing or whatever. The advent of I sixty-nine and the. Increased housing and, and certain commercial. Areas that are going to develop along I sixty-nine. I'm the last guy in this bunch that wants to see those projects timing stalled or maybe even vacated. For lack of service by another entity. I like the idea of being able to provide for our own future going forward. And we talk about regional cooperation. You hear that all the time in politics here in the state of Indiana. But regional cooperation doesn't always seem to work. And, and my example is. You got Mike Duke went and developed the two hundred plus acres there on the southeast corner of one forty-four and thirty-seven. The town of Bargersville wants that utility service out there, forcing that developer to spend a lot of money. To be able to bring that service some five or eight miles or whatever all the way out. Where with the advent of this plant, we could service that area much cheaper. And even I even suggested letting Bargersville have a percentage of the fees that come off of it if that's a big concern to theirs. But the idea is to help the people. You know, it's, if, if you're in, if you're in government just to try to make money at the cost of the general public, then you're in it for the wrong reason. And I, I see that. And so I think with the advent of this plant, we could do a lot of those things that are not currently happening in that area, just like. Ryan talked about the, the knuckle sandwich and Michelle and library, some of those areas in there could be easily served from this plant. At, at a minimum cost to the, to the people that are gonna be hooking up to it. So. To me, it's a win-win. I especially like the idea of the county having their own utility going forward. And maybe you. You can see the advantages of utilities and these cities and towns have them. By God, they protect them to the nth degree. Because they're moneymakers for them. And I'm not suggesting this is gonna be a huge. Windfall on the revenue side, but it's sure gonna. windfall on the revenue side, but it's sure going to get to a point where it would generate some profitability or some cash flow. But more importantly, it can service these people that currently need it. Um, we, we had Keith and, and Steve did a study for us of some of the, um, development that's currently in place, now incorporated areas of Waverly Township. Uh, a number of them, Deerwood is a perfect example, where you got a lot of custom homes up there that are currently on septic tanks. And that's a thirty-plus-year development. Those things are beginning to fail. Those people would love to be hooked up to sewers. And Keith, uh, did, did his projection, you know, maybe about a six million dollar cost to the county to extend service to some five different areas up there. But it does a number of things. It helps those people, it helps their property values. And it helps the county because it makes that area more attractive development, as you know, versus septic and where you're forced to put bigger lots in. There's so many advantages to this, I could go on and on for a good while, but for me, it's, it's a win-win. I said in my communication, time is the essence here. You've already indicated getting a line of casing under thirty-seven before the I sixty-nine construction starts. But here's the real issue. If we stammer and stutter and drag our feet long enough that we miss this opportunity, and I'm talking about Johnson County now, and we miss this opportunity, there's going to be little chance of going back and making it happen later. So I, and as far as the letter of intent that Daniel, um, sent over, um, was the code of the year, County Attorney's Senate. Uh, he's right, that that was just something to get us moving in the direction to get a final agreement put in place so we can move forward and get this thing done.
Ron, could I add a couple of words to what you said? This is Keith again, but I think you're, I, I think you made a good point that, at least when we did the study for Johnson County, we're not trying to rob service from Green or to Bartersville. The problem is that these areas aren't in either one of their service areas, and they're the farthest away from their, from their hub of their treatment and/or discharge of treatment to citizens, which means, you know, Green and Bartersville is going to take care of their own people and their own corporate limits, and they, it would be a huge cost for them to serve these areas. But, you know, thirty years from now, they may be in a position to do that, but right now, that they're tens of millions of dollars away from being able to do that, and likely a lot of these existing subdivisions, septic's are going to fail long before they are, have the capability of serving them.
Yeah, I've, I've seen that happen in a lot of areas, especially rural unincorporated areas where things failed before. We have the processes in place to do it, so, um, I personally understand the urgency in it and, and look forward to possibly getting a, a letter of intent that you guys are good with. Um, so I, I guess it's kind of, at this point, back in, in your court unless I'm missing something. Um, but I'm, I'm definitely interested in, in looking at it and, and, uh, looking forward with some more details once we get into that and the discussion and how things will be set up, so. Uh, I, I think just kind of, I'm going to go on your guys' authority to, to get something to us that you're okay with.
One of the things that we've talked about, and I, I kind of outlined early on is in this, uh, partnership. To me, and, and sometimes I try to oversimplify things, and I'm the first one to admit that. But I see equal cost sharing in the plant. That's simple enough to construct. It's going to take about a one, one sentence to do that. The second part is the extension of service from the plant. We would be, each entity would be responsible for extending that service. That's a pretty simple concept. The revenues that would be generated from that extension of service, the first part of that would go to pay for the, the wastewater treatment. In other words, to keep the plant going. The, the second part of that money would go to reduce your capital costs. And then if there's a profit net involved there, then that would be split equally amongst the two entities. It's pretty simple. The only complicated thing that we had in the beginning, and, and I think we kind of resolved that, was equal representation on this board. And we talked about a nine-member board where you would have four people, we'd have four, and then we would bring in an independent, uh, person who's involved in that industry, has knowledge or expertise in that industry to be the, uh, the deciding vote in the, in the event of, uh, four-four. To me, that's not a very complicated thought either, so, uh, and I know how, not to say anything disparaging about legal people, but you know, they, they get paid by the word sometimes, and, and they tend to make things I think overly complicated. But those are the three basic principles of what we're trying to do here. It's a pretty simple concept. I think it could be put together in, I could put it together this afternoon if you want me to, but you probably don't. But that's the premise on which we need to move forward and get this done. And again, if this, you know, if it's going to take months to put together some kind of a legal arrangement, then we're just shooting ourselves in the foot in the process, so. I would say let's, let's get it going pretty quick. If the other two commissioners here need to see, um, a different letter of intent from the, from the commissioners there in Morgan County, I would ask you to do that expeditiously and not, uh, carry it out for weeks, you know, that. The one that we got, I admit, was, was kind of vague, but as, as Daniel pointed out, it was just the first step in less getting something where we can go ahead and move forward.
Well, and, and though I think the, the Morgan County commissioners are saying they're not really haven't digested that letter of intent to know whether you want us to sign it or not anyway. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, uh, Ron, all, all your points are well taken, and I certainly don't disagree with any of them. Um, the, the only trepidation I have as far as a, a yes or no at this time is more predicated on the fact that our regional sewer district board hasn't seen this. Uh, and they're the ones that have, uh, you know, while it's being funded by the redevelopment corporation, our active regional sewer district is the one operating our current facility and also overseeing the construction of our new one. Just think in fairness, they ought to see that and weigh in on it. Um, that's really the, the genesis of, of my thought. It, it's not a situation of taking it back to attorneys to rewrite or, or, or make overly complicated. It's, it's really more one of making sure that all of the folks that we have involved in the projects have, have been able to see it. Uh, because right now, a, a, up until this point, liter, I mean, quite literally, almost up until today, this discussion's been driven, you know, primarily by the RDC, our RDC. So we have a few more people that need to weigh in. But your point's taken, you know, well taken about not making it overly complicated. Certainly agree with that.
And I'll say, in, in the meeting today, and, and what I've heard from you and Commissioner West, that I would like for you to know, or that, that I'm interested. Um, I think, you know, as always, finding the, the finances to do that are going to be something that we have to figure out how to do, but um, common sense says that this is probably a good approach for both of us as counties, especially with the relationship we have with Morgan County, so, um, I, I, I don't want to see, I guess, Morgan County or anyone else hold this up any more than we need to. If, if you guys are okay with moving forward, I want you to be aware that, that I like the idea of talking about it. And I understand you, from the standpoint of the commissioners, two of us, kind of agree on that at this point, so.
Yeah, and, and while you're mentioning the, uh, you know, where you guys are at as far as the group, I, I misspoke earlier. Commissioner Voiles is on the phone. He, he's just joining at the computer with our county administrator. Um, so I, I did not, I was not aware of he, but he is on the call. Um, so I just wanted to make, clear up that record that all three of us are on the phone call, and that, and that was my mistake initially.
That's fantastic. I appreciate that, sir. That does make a difference when you know that they're possible. Anything?
No, I mean, you can tell, we've all kind of got different opinions. I've still got to digest a little bit more on this. I know Commissioner West has worked on this for a long time, so. There are just some more questions I'll probably come up with and ask. I don't, I'm not trying to stall it. I'm just, you know, before you jump in wholeheartedly on a major financial project, and we're staring numerous other projects in the face, we got the I sixty-nine thing just beginning, we've got a new jail going now, so. The financial aspect, I know, would worry me probably more than anything right now, so.
Understood, but I sixty-nine is going to kind of predicate that anyway, because we're going to have to do something now.
Oh, right, sixty-nine is going to happen. I mean, there's no way.
That's pushing our buttons anyway, so. At this point, it's going to cost us money regardless. It just depends on how we can, we're going to keep some of that, or we can. Anyway, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I think you have a couple ladies on there at least, and um, if there's no further, we'll let you guys get back to whatever your, it looks like everybody's at home there.
I just wanted to say something.
I'd be at work.
I just wanted to say something to Ryan. I think your son snuck a quick thief behind you.
Yes, I.
Earlier, so.
Photo op.
That, that is the youngest member of the Morgan County Regional Sewer District. So, yes, he, he did sneak past me.
We just appreciate you joining us and, and giving us that information as always, and, uh, I just want you guys to know I'll continue to work with Morgan County, and I appreciate everything in the relationship we've had, and I hope it continues in the.
Oh, one, one hundred percent, one hundred percent.
And we enjoy this, this relationship, so thank you very much all, and we'll let you guys get back to whatever it is, and I need a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you.
Guys.